Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Business Meeting for Monday, September the 19th. I will call the meeting to order and we have with us tonight for our opening ceremonies, the junior ROTC unit from Mount Pleasant High School, JM Robinson High School, and Northwest Cabarrus High School. Mount Pleasant High School Cadet First Lieutenant Caitlin Culp, JM Robinson High School Cadet Terrence Moser, Central Cabarrus High School Cadet First Lieutenant Ryan Ellis, Northwest Cabarrus High School Cadet Second Lieutenant Christopher Finley, and the group leader for this evening is Lieutenant Colonel Nelson English. Please rise. We would like to thank the Central Cabarrus High Schools Advanced Fall Choir and we have with us the Choral Director Joel King who will introduce each of the students please at the podium.
Beginning with the front row, we have Sarah Yao, excuse me, Sarah Yao, next Shannon Young and Maddie Mullis and y'all can go ahead and file off. And then second row, we have Victoria Harness, Skylar Beaver, Emily Tronjo, and Casey Little, and then Michael White, Sam Lynch, James Satterwhite, and Joshua Eli White. And thank you.
What a collaborative effort between our high schools. Thank you very much. At this time, I would ask that you join us in a moment of silence in memory of a Central Cabarrus High School student, Justin Hartzell, who passed away on August the 29th of 2011. Thank you, and our thoughts and prayers go out to that family and the friends and also at Central Cabarrus High School. I would ask that the viewing audience and the people that are here with us tonight bear with us. This is only our second meeting of going paperless, so we're all up here with laptops and computers for only the second time, so please bear with us. At this time, I would like to have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
So move it.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. And next, we will begin with our Impact Through Education Awards. We'll have our Public Relations Director, Mrs. Ronnie Boone, to the podium. Two students, a teacher, and a support person from a school are selected to receive the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we will be receiving awards with Bethel Elementary and Harris Road Medal. Mrs. Boone?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We'll begin our Impact Through Education Awards with Bethel Elementary School, and at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the Bethel Administrative Team to please come forward so you can stand with your students and staff members. And our first honoree from Bethel Elementary School is Anna Mann. If Anna and her family would please come forward. Go stand on the tape right there. Anna is a quiet, respectful student. Her teachers describe her as a person they can always count on to do the right thing, to know what is going on in class, and to assist them or other students. One trait they love about Anna is that she enjoys a challenge. She is willing to tackle any task, no matter the difficulty. Anna keeps working until it's accomplished. She is a model student and one every teacher loves to have. Congratulations Anna for making an impact on Bethel Elementary School. Our next honoree from Bethel Elementary School is Brooke Widmore. Would Brooke and her family please come forward? Brooke is a role model for her peers. She has a great deal of patience and is willing to help others. Already this year, she stepped up to help a student with autism organize his materials to go home. Brooke is very sweet and thinks of others' feelings, never wanting anyone to feel left out. Her teachers describe her as a responsible, caring person who always demonstrates a positive attitude. Brooke is an all-around great kid and one teachers enjoy teaching. Congratulations, Brooke. Our next Bethel Elementary School honoree is Ms. Melissa Buchanan. Would Ms. Buchanan and her family please come forward? Mrs. Buchanan has a passion for learning that she shares with students and teachers. Her enthusiasm is contagious. Mrs. Buchanan works collaboratively with all teachers at Bethel to enhance and support them with their teaching objectives while making it fun, hands-on learning, while making it a fun, hands-on learning experience for students. One teacher said, "Mrs. Buchanan has a heart for kids and a wonderful sense of humor that she shares in her teaching. Mrs. Buchanan is truly dedicated to Bethel. Through grants she has written or money from book fairs, the school has added books and technology. She volunteers a lot of time and money to give the students a wonderful fall carnival, and she has spent a lot of time to beautify the school by providing a memorial garden in memory of two Bethel students who were tragically killed several years ago. Mrs. Buchanan is a true asset to Bethel Elementary School. For her hard work and dedication to students and staff, we will always be thankful. Congratulations, Mrs. Buchanan, for making an impact at Bethel Elementary School." And our final recipient from Bethel Elementary School this evening is Mrs. Carrie Whitley. Would Mrs. Whitley and her family please come forward? Mrs. Whitley is a person who cares deeply for everyone. She has the biggest heart. Mrs. Whitley is willing to do whatever it takes to help the school run smoothly. She works in the front office answering calls, greeting parents, and truly makes Bethel a warm and inviting place. Mrs. Whitley doesn't skip a beat as she transitions to the media center to help Mrs. Buchanan, to the computer labs to assist teachers, or the school's technology facilitator. She doesn't miss a beat when she transitions to her DI group or the classroom where she's providing support. Mrs. Whitley has a variety of responsibilities and does each of those with a positive attitude. As one teacher puts it, "Mrs. Whitley's job can only be described by the words etc." ETC. You can be certain you will always see her with a smile on her face no matter what she is doing. Mrs. Whitley is dedicated to the students at Bethel. She directs the safety patrol and leads the fire and life safety bowl team. Bethel is blessed to have Mrs. Whitley as a part of its team. Congratulations for making an impact on education at Bethel Elementary. Next, we will recognize honorees from Harris Road Middle School. Now, I'd like to invite any members of the Harris Road Middle School Administrative Team to please come forward. Our first honoree from Harris Road Middle School is Krista Hill. Would Krista and her family please come forward? Krista was an easy and immediate choice for the Impact Through Education Award. Her teachers describe her as self-motivated, an exemplary student, and a natural-born leader. Krista consistently sets the right example for her peers to follow by embodying the Harris Road Middle School character traits in her schoolwork and social life. Her courteous, respectful, and hard-working attitude has earned her the respect of her teachers and peers. Krista also plays on the Harris Road Girls Basketball and Volleyball Teams, where she has earned a reputation as an outstanding and supportive team player and has been recognized as most improved. Harris Road Middle School is proud to have Krista as a student and appreciates the contributions she has made to her peers, her school, and her community. Congratulations Krista for making an impact through education at Harris Road. Our next honoree from Harris Road Middle School is Ryan Tortorelli. Would Ryan and his family please come forward? Ryan is one of the most industrious and likable students you could ever hope to meet. He has a desire to make everything and everyone around him better and is enthusiastically involved in school activities. Ryan has served as a peer helper since sixth grade, where his outgoing personality, leadership, and honesty have made him an invaluable resource and role model. His patience, humor, and upbeat can-do attitude are trademark characteristics. Ryan has been described by his teachers as a champion of the underdog and a master at molding others' weaknesses into strengths. He is truly gifted at demonstrating goodwill and building his peers' self-confidence. It is an honor to recognize Ryan for his outstanding contributions to his school. Congratulations, Ryan, and thank you for making an impact on education at Harris Road Middle School. Our next Impact Through Education Award honoree from Harris Road Middle School is Mrs. LaShawn Summers. Would Mrs. Summers and her family please come forward? LaShawn Summers is an example of what all of us would want in our child's teacher. As a sixth-grade social studies teacher, she is a student favorite. Her teaching methods and love for middle school students make learning fun and memorable. What sets Mrs. Summers apart is that she shares her passions with the entire school. She's trained as a dancer and over the last few years has developed a step team that is now competing in and winning area competitions. Likewise, as the emcee of the school's pep rallies, her spirit and shining personality are highlighted, making them events students always remember. You would be hard-pressed to find a student at Harris Road Middle School who has not been touched in some way by Mrs. Summers. Thank you, Mrs. Summers, for the impact on education you make at Harris Road Middle. Our final honoree from Harris Road Middle School this evening is Mrs. Anne Moose. Would Mrs. Moose and her family please come forward? Anne Moose is an integral part of Harris Road Middle School. As the main office receptionist, she wears many hats. Greeting parents and students, answering phones, and dealing with staff requests are only a small part of what she does for Harris Road. Mrs. Moose has the ability to make sure that each person understands that they are important. Her first priority is that every individual is treated with respect and their problem met with compassion. Anyone entering the school's office can be assured that they will be greeted with a smile regardless of the time of day. In addition, Mrs. Moose's knowledge of Harris Road and Cabarrus County schools is vital in ensuring that the school's systems run as smooth as they should. Typically, she is every administrator's first contact when trying to diagnose and solve a problem. As typified in her standing and reciting the school's character traits each morning, much of Harris Road Middle School's accomplishments and well-deserved reputation can be tracked through Mrs. Moose and her leadership in the front office. Congratulations and thank you for making an impact on education at Harris Road Middle School.
And next, Board Members, your 3.2. We will have Dr. Shepherd and Mr. Tim Vaughn to the podium to present the Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Audience Members. Last spring, thanks to the generosity of Hilbush Ford, we began recognizing one teacher each month for his or her outstanding work. We asked our parents and our students to help us by nominating an outstanding teacher, and they responded overwhelmingly. We were able to honor three teachers last year, and I'm excited that we will begin our first year, full year, of Hilbush Ford Teachers of the Month tonight with our September honoree. I've asked Mr. Vaughn to join me here, and at this time, at the podium, I'd like to ask Ms. Monica Duckett to come forward. Ms. Duckett? That'd be great, right there. Ms. Duckett is a third-grade teacher at Pitt School Road Elementary School, and she was nominated by one of her student's parents. The parent wrote that Ms. Duckett has done a wonderful job of turning her third-grade student, who had lots of potential but who really didn't care much about how school went, into a child who really thrives to do her best schoolwork, make her best grades, and has a great time along the way. And I think that's a desired quality that we need in all of our teachers, Ms. Duckett, and it's so important for every child to feel successful academically. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Vaughn to present to you some awards that he has from Hilbush Ford.
I know, I speak for the Board Members. We do not have these recognitions during the summer months when school is not in session, so we forget how enjoyable that part of the agenda actually is. At this time, if any of you that have received an award and you do not wish to stay, you may exit out the side door without any problem. We will not be offended whatsoever. Also, Board Members, I failed to let you know, Mr. Board Member Keiger, who I'm sure you've missed by now, will be later joining us this evening. He had a job site situation. Now, we will move on to 4.1. And I would ask... It's the minutes, yes.
I would move for approval of the minutes of August the 1st, August the 15th, August the 17th, and August the 22nd.
Are there any noted corrections or notations? I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter. May I have a second? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. And now, I will turn the mic over to Dr. Shepherd for superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have several things I'd like to tell you about this evening. First of all, I want to thank you for the Board's participation and yesterday's dedication at Winkler Middle School. It was a wonderful time, and we want to congratulate that community on opening their new school. I also want to make you aware, and members of our audience, that our high school graduation schedule is posted on our website, and those dates that we're announcing are for the class of 2012 will be June 11 through the 13th at the Cabarrus Arena and Events Center. And another announcement, congratulations to our Child Nutrition Department on receiving a National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant for $23,000, and that grant will be used to buy a new dishwashing machine at Wolfmotto Elementary School. And the new equipment will increase the energy efficiency of the school's meal operations by cutting the amount of water used per hour by more than one-half, reducing the annual energy usage. I'm very proud of that grant. Another announcement, I want to thank those at Tire Kingdom and BD Racing for the donation of a show car to the Northwest Cabarrus High School Automotive Class. And we had a great ceremony out there last week. I want to thank Board Member Keiger for attending with us. Representatives from the Tire Kingdom, including some of our past students who had worked through the administrative or the automotive program that now have returned that are racing, were in attendance, and it was a great time to see those persons honored by giving back to help future generations. Also, I want to remind you and our audience of some events that we had this week, a couple very exciting events. We will be hosting this Thursday at Cox Mill High School, the North Carolina School Board Association's District 6 Meeting, and that will give us a chance to have our high schools involved and show off the new facilities that we have and let others in our region know about the good things that are going on in Cabarrus County. And then on Friday night, we'll host the Chinese delegation from the Jiangsu Province who will be visiting North Carolina. And through a partnership with the Center for International Understanding, we've been able to bring teachers over from China to teach in our middle and high schools, and you'll have a chance then on Thursday night, excuse me, Friday night, to meet some of those folks. And I know I have more than usual, but just a couple of points of pride. We have SAT results were released this week, and though we saw a decline in the national scores and the state scores and the Cabarrus County scores overall, we are very proud of the fact that our percentage of students who are tested on the SAT has risen from 55% in 2009, 10% to this year, 65% of our students, our seniors, were tested with the SAT, and that is something that we have to be very proud of, the percentage of students that are increasing. And as a result, when more students participate in the test, we traditionally see the scores dip, but we are still very proud of the results that our high school students received and the number of students participating. And then lastly, I want to make you, obviously the viewing audience, aware if they're seeing this tonight, it's because of our partnership that we developed with the Cabarrus County Government, who has placed our board meetings once again on their Channel 22 as well as making it available on the YouTube website, and we're pleased to have these board meetings back on air. So just a few announcements and some good news that I wanted to share with you this evening.
Thank you very much. Now, we will move through guest speakers. There are none signed up for this evening. On to Part 7.1, which is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, we will move into Section 8. This is our action portion of our agenda, and we will begin with our approval of the policies. I'm going to go through these as we normally do, so I'll begin with Policy 4317, gang prohibition. And I know a couple of you had some questions, but it appeared that they all got answered. Hearing none. I will move down to Policy 4318, use of technology devices. Hearing none. Hearing none.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I think, based on comments I gave to Mrs. Smith, I think she had a slight modification of wording in 4318.
Absolutely.
Now, what we have, can we look at each of the changes? Would they be good?
Donna, let me ask you real quick, since I didn't bring you up, I thought they were all answered. So, is 4317 good? Or 4318 is the only one that has issues?
There are two policies that I'm aware of, is 4318 and also 4330.
So, just those two? But 4317 is good to go?
Yes. If you'll bring that up, that would be great. Okay, on 4318, we'll give just a moment for that to come up. We're looking really at a couple of changes here. And one, and I appreciate Ms. Furball pointing this out, in some of our usage, we're finding that parent is there without guardian. The first change would be on B, the first paragraph, we'd be adding, after a student's parent, we'd be adding guardian there. The second piece that we're looking at would be actually Section B, consequences for unauthorized use, going down to number four. I think that's where we want to begin. And I'll go back to the original concern, if that would be good.
It's modified in board docs already, is that correct? Do you have the new copy loaded?
Actually, no.
Because I thought it was 4318B4, but maybe I gave you the wrong quote of the position.
But I think the situation you were referencing may not be...Because what we have is, when you look at number four, it says to send illicit text messages, and then four seems to communicate during a school emergency. And there was the concern that you don't want students who are the first on the scene to be witness to an emergency and not use communication that's needed to use to communicate to emergency staff. And I think that was the concern that we were looking at. And so, what we were looking at adding there would actually be using the phone in an emergency to contact emergency response personnel. And I think that was the concern.
Donna, I'm just a little bit confused because I see four is read now and says to send illicit text messages, but then it has four again to communicate during a school emergency. I'm not sure if you're looking at the same thing that we are, but four appears to be there twice.
Right. I think that illicit text messages was maybe added, it just needs to be renumbered for the rest of it.
Yeah, renumbered.
I think that's the point, yes.
My question was what she said. It simply said, "may not use in case of emergency," and I just want to make it clear that it was okay if you spotted someone having a medical emergency or something.
So, actually, just renumbering those will take care of that?
I think so.
Mark?
Renumber and reword. The new, what is now the second four, which will become five, will say that it's to communicate during a school emergency other than to emergency response. Sorry, thank you. I think the current, the second number four, which will become number five, will say to communicate during a school emergency except to contact emergency response personnel. In other words, you can use your cellphone to call and report an emergency. The concern was, if there's an emergency going on, we don't want everyone getting on their phone saying, "Oh, my gosh, there's an emergency, there's a bomb threat," or, you know, "Come pick me up," or those kind of communications were disrupting the regular emergency communication. So, you can certainly call to say, "We need help," and use it for that. And I think that's the clarification that we would add.
Board members, is everyone clear?
There's one other addition on that, which is D, under liability, the very last sentence, where it talks about here is worded, "personal communication device." It actually should say, "personal electronic device," and that would make it consistent with the rest of the policy. Those were the proposed changes on that particular policy.
Okay. Board members, comments or questions? So, was that good clarification? Everyone good? Great. And I will let you move to 4330, which is your next one for clarification.
I think there was a question. I want to respond the way I was responding to it, and to see if that has answered the question. We in no way ever want to communicate to students that they should not be engaged in normal high school activity. You know, there are certain things where you may be waiting on an activity to start, or you may be waiting to be picked up or something like that by your parent. And I think the one question was 3B, and we were proposing to leave this the same, where it talks about a student, it actually says, "The student is loitering at any school after the close of the school day without any specific need or supervision." And I think the conversation that we were having as we were looking at that change was saying, "No way would we want to stop students from doing traditions." Okay, for example, painting the school rock, I think that would be a good example, waiting on the parents to pick them up. And the key here, I think, that will solve that issue is talks about after the close of the school day without any specific need or supervision. And students who are waiting on their parents to pick them up, I believe the way the policy's worded now would address that situation. But that would be the proposal we were making back, because in no way do we want to say we're watching the environment so closely that students can't do what students normally do in normal, I'd say, middle school and high school activity. And I think that was one of the questions.
Board members, comments or questions? Is everyone clear and okay with that verbiage change?
So, technically, we're not recommending a change, we just wanted to clarify that point.
Clarify, great, okay. Okay, moving to 4331, assaults, threats, and harassment. Hearing none. 4345, student discipline records. Hearing none. 4360, appeals of consequences, no greater than short-term suspension. Delete, I'm sorry, you deleted that one.
Deleting the total policy, yes.
Does that just actually move to the October?
Actually, this policy is covered in another.
Great, okay, perfect. And that appears to take care of that. So, if everyone is good, may I have a motion that Policies 4317, 4318, 4330, 4331, 4345, and deletion of 4360 be approved with the noted corrections on first reading? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to 8.2, which is the Approval of the Vehicle Usage Plan, and Mr. Wiki is currently at the Cabarrus County Commissioners Meeting representing us tonight. So, I know you've all had time to look at the changes that were made. Did anyone have any questions, comments? Hearing none. May I have a motion that the Vehicle Usage Plan Phase 2 be approved as presented with a subsequent review by the board in three months? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next, we will choose the delegates for our NCSBA Annual Conference. I'm sorry, Board Attendants first. And I'll begin. I actually have a conflict that's just arose, so I will not be in attendance for that November 14th through the 16th for our Greensboro Conference. Are there any other? I know there were some others that said that they thought they would have a conflict for actually going either one of the days or several of the days.
Madam Chair, I will be at another event on those two days.
Actually, I'm just going to start down the line. I know Mr. Shue said he would be able to attend. Ms. Minnet, are you going to be able to attend? Okay, and both of you. And I know Mr. Keiger's planning on attending. So, may I have a motion that, actually, Mr. Shue, Ms. Minnet, Ms. Carpenter, and Mr. Fur, and Mr. Keiger will attend the NCSBA Annual Conference in Greensboro, North Carolina, November 14th through the 16th, 2011, and will be registered as needed. All those in...Do I get a second? Y'all are not with me tonight. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Actually, y'all have done really well tonight. It's me that's having a hard time following through this. Okay, now that we know actually who's attending, we need to approve delegates that will represent us for voting. And actually, there was a question, voting only takes place on the second date, so if there's an issue with what date that you actually can be there or have to be there, the second date, the Tuesday is the day they actually vote. So, just for clarification, and since we know who is attending, I'm just going to make the suggestion that those five become our voting delegates, since we are allowed five according to NCSBA. Right. And actually, I think Blake's actually offered to be the alternate. So, are y'all good? I mean, the names are the same, so is everyone good for that? Okay. So, may I have a motion that the following board members be approved as voting delegates and an alternate at the NCSBA Annual Conference, November 14th through the 16th, 2011, which will be Mr. Shue, Ms. Minnet, Mr. Fur, and Ms. Carpenter, with Mr. Keiger being the alternate? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. And our next item on the list, since we do not have any nominations for this one, I'm going to actually move to 9.1 and ask that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318186 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee pursuant to General Statute 143-318183 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, and I'll say goodnight to the viewing audience, and thank you for being with us tonight. And board members, you have five minutes.